Giffens.
Here.
I'm sorry. Jim and Row.
Here.
Sally, Rich, and Rich West.
Here.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
Public, for which it stands, one nation,
under God, indivisible,
and God of the God.
Can you have approval of November 10 work session and regular council meeting as well as in November 13 emergency?
Salute. House Senate.
Call on favor.
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, Mr. Clevinger.
Here.
Do you agree to approval of the minutes?
I agree.
Mr. Giffens.
I agree.
Thank you. We have to do roll call for you two throughout the meeting, okay?
No problem.
Not a problem.
Do everybody's, I don't have problems for a vote if it's, if you're doing it for one, if you have to do it for everybody or.
Okay, so you want to just do it each time here?
Jim, if we're doing a roll call vote, do we have to do it for everybody or just those in our line email?
My recommendation is do a roll call for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
And injecting further, somebody's going to give the little disclaimer about the.
Yes, recording?
Yeah.
Yes, just a reminder that we are recording the online meetings, so if you participate in the meeting, you're given your permission to be recorded. All right, first on the agenda after approval of the minutes is the stormwater rate study. Where are we at with? What are we going to look at? Cost associated? I believe unbought offered, so we have. Online. Yep, is it Jeff?
Yep, yeah, hi, good evening, this is Jeff. Hi, how are you doing?
Jeff is with Baker and Tilly. I don't have that.
Yeah, sure, sure, well, good evening, everyone. Also have Amber Nielsen participating.
Hi, everyone.
So Amber helped put together the numbers within the stormwater study. And is Jonathan present at the meeting as well?
Yes.
Okay, good to know. Yeah, we can't see everyone, so just, just. Since Jonathan was, was obviously key in helping provide some information here. You may want to add to the discussion at some point, but. It sometime has passed, a lot of things have happened since we began the study earlier this year. It seems like, which was pre-pandemic, it feels like it was about 10 years ago at this point. But, so we had put some numbers together and, to be honest with you, I'm trying to recall whether we actually presented information earlier this year or whether it was still in draft form.
Jeff, you were scheduled to come to the council meeting in mid-March, right when everything happened.
Yeah.
So the council hadn't seen anything until just this week now.
Okay, great, thanks for the reminder there. So what we've done is, of course, we, you know, put together the numbers earlier this year. And then we have made just a few, couple minor modifications to the numbers that we had prepared earlier this year. But with that, what we'll do is, does everyone have a copy of the report in front of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. And I'll. I don't know if it would be helpful to share my screen or not, it sounds like if everyone has a copy, then we can, we can probably just follow along together.
Jeff, if you want to share your screen, that's fine. I think it's set for anyone to share, if you can, that'd be great.
All right, let me see if I can. Pull up the right screen here. How about that? Can you see it okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So the first part of the report is sort of an executive summary where we just share some, some, really a historical perspective and share some key performance indicators and then also share some graphs. And then the, the rest of the, well, really the, the nuts and bolts of the, of the study is, is under supplemental data, pages four through nine. So what I thought I might do is just kind of, you know, walk us through, kind of hit the high points of, of each one of those. Schedules. So on page two, if you're following along, as I mentioned, we just, we looked back and we prepared or gathered financial information. Looking back at the last three calendar years, which was 2017 through 2019. And again, just to sort of provide a baseline on how the utility has performed. And we can see, based on cash balances, you know, starting in 2017 up to, up through 2019, we've sent, we've seen an increasing trend, which is good. So essentially, the, the utility brought in, you know, roughly $27,000 over that three-year period, so receipts were exceeding expenditures. So as of the end of 2019, the utility had roughly $111,000 of, of cash on hand. And you could see then the breakdown between, for each year, revenues and expenses for operating income and then kind of total debt income and debt loss down below. So we've seen again that positive trend from, from year to year. You know, obviously, as we go through this, that's not necessarily, you know, past spending isn't always an indication of future spending. And so we'll just kind of walk you through. Sort of our projected numbers in terms of where we expect the utility to go, going forward. On page four is an analysis of, again, the, the cash position, which was at the end of 2019. Again, $111,000 cash on hand. And then what we've shown here are just some best practices, if you will, in terms of how much, you know, we would recommend at a minimum to be held within certain funds. So you may recall with the other utilities, as you have debt outstanding, there are certain minimum reserves that are required per the bond ordinance. You know, in this case, since there is no debt outstanding, there are no requirements, but the recommended reserves are, are, I guess, the very similar. For the operating fund, we always recommend no less than two months of operation and, and maintenance expense and reserve, which is about $2,500. And then, even though I don't, I don't believe you have a depreciation fund set up, but if you, if you were to have one set up, we would recommend, you know, always keeping roughly one year's worth of, of capital expenditures and reserve. So you can see in total that, you know, you would, the utility would more than meet those reserve recommendations by about $71,000. So, you know, in terms of meeting those reserves, cash balances are, are adequate. But again, knowing that there, you know, are likely some from future capital needs. You know, the $71,000 is, would not be adequate to, to cover all those needs going forward. So page five looks at, you know, over the next five years, well, now four years, because we're already through 2020. But at the time we started this analysis, we were looking at years 2020 through 2024, as far as what capital projects may be in the hopper and needed to be paid for through the stormwater utility. So you can kind of see those listed out here. In, in total, and this information was, was shared by Jonathan. But in total, we're estimating about $189,000 of capital improvements. So, you know, if we're just. That out on average over the next five years, that would be, you know, about $37,000 that the utility would need to generate in revenue in order to cash flow those capital needs.
Jeff, this is Rich West, I'm from the council chamber, a question on that capital improvement plan. In 2020, you have $75,000 for the park building, stormwater project. Jonathan or Jeff, can you?
Yeah, I can. So that one would be, if we choose to do it, the extension of, if you remember when we did the trail section here that CRC funded, there was also a stub of stormwater that came out of the outlet down to the lake and we brought it just to the first section of sidewalk right along the beach lot or lakefront here. That project would pay for an extension from where it stops all the way to the east side of the park building. So it would take all the drainage from this end of the parking lot, collect all that, as well as around the building here, and take it all down to that outlet rather than push it out onto the beach and replace the sidewalk along there as part of it. It's something we've talked about, but, you know, it's not, it's, it's in there for planning purposes. I'd like to see it done in the next, you know, year or two, but it's not something that's been formally approved at this point or anything.
Yeah, I, I wondered, you know, about the beach lodge itself, I thought we fixed.
Yeah.
Stormwater problems related to that when we did this building, this 1.2 or $6 million project. That, that works out to $15,000 a year, which in terms of the projected increase is about half of that.
Yeah, it's a significant part of it, so like you said, the, what's been done around the building and parking lot, now, a lot of that comes out onto the beach or on, on either side of the building, basically onto the beach. And this would just allow us to tie that all in together, take it down to the one single outlet and replace all the sidewalk.
On the other side, that one?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Just picking up on, on that, on that point, though, you know, that is obviously a significant piece of the overall, you know, capital plan. And so, you know, if we were to follow this plan to the T, you know, we see that in 2022, well, really for 2020 and 2022, that's where, you know, the majority of those capital needs hit. So, you know, what we would need to keep an eye on, obviously, is, you know, from a cash flow standpoint, you know, we would, we would need to look at building in sufficient funds, you know, before you take that on, obviously, to be able to cash flow that. Again, going back to the previous schedule, you know, right now, the stormwater utility has about 70, or had about $71,000 above those minimum reserves. So you typically wouldn't want to go below those. But you could spend up to about $71,000 of that cash down. So again, just kind of want to point that out, that going forward, you know, if this is the, the plan that the town pursues, then, you know, we'll need to look ahead year by year, just to make sure that there's adequate, adequate funds there to, to pay for those projects.
Were the, and the biggest question for Karen, since this includes the 2020 year, basically at year end, and I think we probably paid for any stormwater work. There was $60,000, $68,000. That's already paid for, how would we?
Right, and it's probably not reflected in, in this report.
Yeah. Big chunk of the projection, I think the demand is going to be going through, which already paid for.
Page, page six is focusing on operating expenses. And historically, haven't had a whole lot by way of operating expenses. So we started with our, our test year, our stump year of 2019. And out of the stormwater utility, there were total expenditures of $10,647. So again, we, we started with that number and then we made a few adjustments to those specific line items. So for materials and supplies. There, you know, in 2019, the utility spent $4,800. If we look back historically. 2018, you know, you spent $11,000 and 2019, $4,800. So there was some, you know, higher spending in previous years, so we just bumped that up a little bit by just taking sort of a historical average. So we did increase materials and supplies by roughly $3,200. And then we also added in some inflation at 3%. And then also some additional, additional O&M, just to recognize that going forward, there, you know, as the system ages, there's going to be some additional repairs and maintenance that's going to be required, so we added in another thousand. So in total, we're building in roughly $15,000 per year for operating type expenses. Now, the one thing I just point out that, obviously, we haven't done and the, and the town hasn't done in the past, and that is allocate, allocate other department type expenses that are shared by other departments to the water utility. So for example. You know, an allocation of, say, clerks' compensation or town manager's compensation or benefits. You know, we haven't allocated anything to the stormwater at this point. You know, some municipalities do, do that, you know, kind of based on an allocation of the amount of time that each department spends on stormwater. But again, in, in this case, we, we haven't done that. So in terms of, you know, the rates, page seven reflects a comparison of what those projected costs are to the existing revenue stream. So again, we, we, in terms of cost or revenue requirements, we're building in $15,300 for operating. And then the $37,800 for future capital projects, which were identified on, on the previous schedule. So that, again, that's just the average over the five-year period. Then, you know, comparing that to what the current revenue stream is, which is $23,000, that's based on the current bill of $2, which was adopted back in 2009, I believe. So the town is about 12 years removed or so from when that rate was originally adopted. So, you know, if we're looking at having to generate, you know, $51,000 per year to meet those estimated costs within the utility, comparing that to the current revenue stream of $23,000. Utility would need to generate an additional $27,000 per year to cover those costs. So that's, you know, that would require a average stormwater bill or residential stormwater bill of $4.36 compared to the current rate or current bill of $2. So we're, we're more than, more than doubling the revenue stream and therefore we're more than doubling the stormwater rate.
Quick question on, I know that, that fee is attached to every bill as part of that, is it part of the minimum fee, Karen? So if we did increase the bill, say, by this $2.50, for example, or $2 or whatever, would we be increasing that minimum level then? Because every homeowner would have to carry that, no matter how much usage they have, in other words.
And it's, yeah, that stormwater rate isn't calculated on usage, so you pay the minimum water ability, $18.36 or $36 or something, and then people are paying $2 for stormwater, something for fire protection, the trash, so their, their itemized out separately.
Okay, so that basic minimum would just be going up by this amount, right, if we followed this study? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and it's, and again, that's correct, and it's, we're assuming here that we're not, other than increasing the rate, we're not modifying the rate structure. So we're, we're keeping the same sort of flat rate structure, so everyone pays, you know, that same rate. You know, there, there are other, you know, rate structures that are used, which, you know, vary. I mean, there's multiple ways to sort of slice the pie here. You know, anywhere between kind of what we're doing here with the town, where it's just one single rate per, per property versus, you know, maybe a multi-tiered rate that recognizes that, you know, you know, some customers or some properties have more, are, are larger, have more impervious area. So there's, there's several ways you can go about that, but, you know, within this study, we haven't, you know, looked at any of those other rate structures or, or alternatives, we just stuck with, you know, what the, what the town has done, done in the past.
Sure, yeah. I think years ago when we started having a stormwater rate, gosh, I, I want to say we started at a dollar per household and, or $2, was it? Was it this, this was it, the $2?
2009, this was.
Yeah, we've never changed it in all that time. And we have been able to make some progress with stormwater projects, collecting that small amount.
So. I really haven't had a lot spent out specifically out of the stormwater, not funded until this year.
Like the three major stormwater projects that have happened, I guess the first one was before my time on that end of Lake Shore. Where did that match come from, Karen?
That was actually, I think that was money that was set aside possibly from the sewer.
Okay.
And the general fund, it was, they had set aside $500,000 in the rainy, but then put it in the rainy.
And then the next one was CRC provided the funding for that, and then now at Davis Street, we used.
This one, yes.
Yeah. We actually used some of the stormwater existing balances, the, the match on that end.
Community crossings, yeah.
I mean, this is a good question, but I would suggest that we set up a standard of every five years or something that should be reviewed and not wait for 10 or 12, because I think that's a problem, because before with water rates.
Yes.
It's like all of a sudden, the water rates, you know, what you hold in about 48 months or something like that, it's not even 24 months. And I mean, this is not, in $2, we have justified, but, you know, we should go with all of those, you know, evaluating rates.
It's quite a process to raise rates in terms of going through advertising and hearing. So I'm wondering, you know, we talked about doing a, a water sewer study. Should we basically keep this on the radar until we do that? And if we do have to make an adjustment on those, do it all at once? Or is this something you guys are recommending we act on sooner?
I don't, I mean, as long as it's, you know, realistically in the next, ideally six months, maybe 12, as long as it doesn't go further than that, I think would be okay.
I mean, since it's supposed to be a five-year study and basically the first year of that is already gone and we've, we've already paid for that, before we made a decision that it doubles the rates, I would like us to see, not spend a lot of money doing it, I mean, but to get, add another year, go through 2025 or something like that on the projections, to see if there are any other, any other capital projects that we might anticipate being out there. Look at the thing we can save and compare to something else.
Yeah, and I would just point out, if I may, this is Jeff. Page, page eight shows, you know, the current rate structure, so, you know, you do have the, it's the flat rate, but there is sort of a three, three-tier structure, if you will, you've got, you know, the $2 for residential and then a rate of $4 for non-residential or commercial and then $8 for condos, hotels, motels, establishments. Now, what we've shown here is, you know, sort of an assumed scenario where you, instead of going right to the, the $4.36, you know, right away, you know, we're just showing that as, as phasing this in over three years, it's just, you know, a sort of an, an example, if you will, of, of an approach you could take. And the only, only thing I would, I would caution you on, as far as, not caution, but just to point out, you know, if you were looking at phasing in that rate increase over time. If you do that, then you're not going to have, you're not going to be generating this $51,000 in year one. It's going to take, you know, you're going to build up to that over a three-year period, which means, you know, you wouldn't be able to generate, on average, the $37,000 that you need in order to pay for, you know, the projected $189,000 of, of projects over the five-year period. So, you know, you can, you can certainly look at phasing in, but just want to point out that if, if you do that, then you're, what you're looking at doing is extending, you're extending that five-year capital plan from five years to something longer.
Yeah. That makes sense. Karen?
So if you're going to increase rates, you have to be, you would have to be on water and sewer and storm, you have to do three different, three separate licenses. You have public carries on.
Each one of those.
So I also wonder if it would be just too overwhelming to do all three at the same time? And maybe just, you know, like, just base things in over a period of time and just work through it. And, you know, not necessarily take our time, but, you know, maybe lessen the pain, the initial pain.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that philosophy. I do remember, Sally, you may remember, we did that, I think it was with Mark Sullivan when he was at Commonwealth. We did a stormwater study and we, you know, like, we, we knew our hottest priority was around the school. We were having that heavy flooding and took care of that issue, Lake Shore Drive was an issue, we had a big project there. We've had some smaller ones like, like the one on Davis Street that you're, we just recently did. But I'm wondering if we need to dig that up, because there were areas identified there.
Yeah, I, I think when, Jeff, when we were going over this back in February, I reviewed it, and I think Davis was the last major one in there.
On that one?
Yeah, because the other ones, the ones you see on there were not in the Davis Street plan. I think those, there were the two on Lake Shore Drive, Davis Street.
I feel like there was one on the west side of the, west side of the lake. Do you remember that, Sally? I just remember Ralph Winters pushing a little bit for that particular one because of how it might affect the lake.
At one time, they were, they were looking at bringing in Marmont, I believe.
Uh huh.
And then another time, you were talking about Davis Street.
That might be what I'm thinking of.
And, you know, Marmont, Mill. Most of those. There's no access to the lake. You have to be going through, you know, personal property. Residential area and string way. I'm not sure, I would, you could add a little bit more huddling at the side of the road, a lot more huddling on South Lane Street between. I would say Hawkins Court and Davis, since they did the repaint. And I think what, what happened there was, you know. And I think what, what happened there was, you know, the old bricks underneath, if there was enough cracks at the edge of the road, it seeped down into that sand and just teared almost as fast as it came down. So it was gone. Now, with Dayton being new and being in good shape, the new curbing that was put in is pretty much sealed that, so the water has no place to escape. And I would say that we either need to put in some more big French drains or or something on that or along through there. I think that we had most of that stormwater. So I think they got it. Yeah, but at Marmont, Mill Street, Marmont and Plymouth Street used to flood, and that's been taken care of.
Yeah.
And the others really don't flood on flood.
So maybe, maybe we did get them all off that.
There may have been a, a spot somewhere along there on one of the, does that, I, I feel like those were the major ones. There might have been a couple smaller spots listed in there. But I know that was one of the things I looked over on when we started on this.
Early in the year.
Yeah.
It does seem like that definitely the hot priorities.
Those were the big ones, yeah.
Yeah.
And there still is that problem on, on Plymouth and Marmont.
Well, not the Marmont.
No, that's like what it was.
Yeah.
I mean, it used to be water across the entire road.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, it flooded so much property, you know, it's, and they couldn't eat in that, they put in, they put in curb there, they put in drains there that didn't increase the size that it was underneath or in the ground. So when we get heavy, heavy rains, that area flooded.
And I think.
This is far afield.
Yeah.
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 Well, and looking, but in that area, you went through privately. I think it's either privately owned or it goes to private property. And they didn't want to expand.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, so.
And so, you know, you can take, you know, where that much water can't cram it through one foot.
Also, I think that drain is almost the same level as the lake. There's not a lot of drop there.
Yeah. Well, maybe we just then have Jonathan and Bob get together and think through whether we have any more projects and then readdress whether we want to go ahead and put out a, a public hearing and start getting the ordinance going on raising that stormwater rate. So maybe they could come back to us sometime around the first of the year with a recommendation on what to do. Does that work for you?
Yeah, yeah. Jeff, did you want to cover that last page? I can see up there. You're on mute, Jeff.
Hello?
There you are.
Now we got you.
Ah, all right, thanks, sorry about that. Excuse me. Yeah, real quick, you know, we, every year we put out, not every year, every couple of years, two, three years, we, we put out a study that looks at, you know, the majority of the stormwater rates around the state. So this is, pulls a few examples of, you know, communities in the area that also have stormwater rates, just to kind of provide a, a comparison, if you will. So the, the average, based on our last study, the average around the state was five dollars and sixty-two cents. So, you know, I guess just to point out the obvious, you know, the rate that the town is currently charging and, and even the, you know, proposed rates are still, still within or below the statewide average. So that, that's a, you know, not necessarily a reason to enact new rates or not enact new rates, but it's, I think it's sometimes helpful information for you to have, just to have a knowledge of what other communities are charging around the state.
And the other thing I wanted to mention, Jeff, I think you touched on it, but right now, the way our budget works, we don't take really any staff time out of the storm fund. So Karen or I or Bob or even, you know, any of our utilities crew are doing maintenance on a storm sewer, we'll take out the actual equipment purchase, the materials purchase, but their time is paid for out of one of the other utilities or out of general fund.
Okay.
And same with even large equipment purchases like the backhoe where we split that. We didn't, I don't think we took anything out of storm just because it doesn't generate enough revenue really to, those large equipment items to take a portion out of there. So even if we wanted to take out this project from the capital, I feel like you could really make a case for some of those other things being put in there in its place.
Sure.
So in that, I mean, just kind of the history of it, like I said, of starting at two dollars and trying to generate a little bit, it just really didn't present that option over the last twelve years.
Yeah, that makes sense. Good point. Anything else on the study, Jeff, that you think we should consider along the way?
You know, I think, I think we've probably covered most of it. You know, to, to Jonathan's last point, I mean, that's, that's one thing the town could consider, you know, in maybe having stormwater share and some of those other costs where the stormwater actually utilizes labor or utilizes, you know, materials or, or equipment. You know, that obviously will, will drive the rate up more. But, you know, something to, to at least consider. But, you know, other than that, I think, you know, looking at, you know, maybe I think dusting off those capital needs and, and making sure that, you know, before you take action on, you know, any type of rate adjustment, just make sure the council's comfortable, the town's comfortable, that we've identified, you know, all those capital needs. And, and then, you know, we'd be happy to go back and just, you know, insert the new numbers as needed to, to give you an updated rate if, if, if needed, so. But I think other than that, I think that's, that's all we have for tonight.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Thanks for the thorough report and thanks for taking the time to present to us. And thanks as well, Amber.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty hyphen zero one two, which is the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance. That's passed on for its read at the last meeting. Are there any discussion points from the council members on this?
No.
Karen or Jonathan, any further discussion points from you two?
No, just that I provided the list of the proposed.
Yeah.
For everyone, so one that's still kind of in what's made possibly of EMS, so if, if you're fine, go ahead and read, pass it on second read and then the weight talker until the next meeting, just make sure.
Okay.
Jenny, it's hard for us to hear Karen.
Okay. She basically just was saying that she had provided the council with the salary information for each of the positions.
Right.
And the, if we were comfortable passing on second read or if you had any questions or comments, otherwise I'll honor a motion to pass on second read.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Uh, since we have a five oh vote, does, you want to go ahead and put it on next? Okay, we're going to put third read on the next agenda, so we'll take care of that next time around. All right, next on the agenda, we have the county ordinance twenty twenty-one, the COVID nineteen face mask requirements for local workplace safety and enforcement. We sent a copy of this out to the council members, noting that this is a countywide ordinance, including the city of Plymouth and all of the towns in the county. And we thought it would be a good idea to have the council weigh in on affirming that we are going to support and follow this countywide ordinance. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the ordinance?
Question, I assume as it sort of steps down from state level to county level to the local level, book level, the more stringent that's been the, the level.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. I just wanted to make sure everyone, because the, the county level in terms of enforcement talks about merchants calling our local law enforcement, they have a lot of eyes on the case. We can't, less than that, but I, I guess, just to be aware of the fact that that's what it is.
Any comments, Mr. Giffens or Mr. Clevinger, or any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, I would honor a motion to affirm county ordinance twenty twenty-one COVID nineteen face mask requirements for local workplace safety and enforcement.
Some, second.
Sally motioned, Rich West seconded, roll call. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor? Great, thank you, Karen. Thank you, council. Next, we have regional seller plan update. I don't have any new updates. I know that the quarterly meeting just got set with Oprah, which that announcement will actually go up to the team tomorrow. It's going to be December eleventh, which is just our team providing them an update on all the projects that are underway. Jonathan, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just. Yes, two things. I think the council approved moving forward and redevelopment approved funding, the upgrade to the LED message board sign. But we do have that purchase agreement. And I'd ask for a motion to authorize the council president to sign that purchase agreement with great craft signs.
Rich motion, Sally seconded. Roll call. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Chardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
And the other regional seller update I had was that Marshall County Crossroads launched a new initiative to help educate and advocate for healthy practices to slow the spread of COVID nineteen. So there's a lot of resources on there, testing sites, information from our local healthcare providers. And we helped organize a press conference last week that was, I think received good coverage, made, I think, all our local news channels. And so that's been reposted there. And I apologize if you tried to click on the link in my report. I obviously can't spell Marshall County or Road. MarshallCountyCrossroads.com/takecharge is the name of the website.
Yeah, I just want to thank Jonathan for all of his work on that. This will be an ongoing campaign of just trying to get the message out and make sure that it's a, you avoid complacent seeming, so on.
Yeah, I think that's all I have.
All right, we move on with seller plan.
Yeah, just to note that those parcels where we are, going to need to acquire additional rideaway for Lake Max Trail Phase Two. RW South is the consultant there in Indianapolis. They're still working on finalizing those documents and, and trying to get those parcels forward. I believe it's ten parcels on Main Street. Hopefully those are able to happen here in the very near future.
Great. Shall we move right into town managers' report?
Yeah.
All right.
And the facilities end, I don't think Bob's here tonight. E and B paving is substantially complete with South Main and Davis. There's still a lot of landscaping and touch-up to do. But Bob and I and Brian Veal from Midwestern walked it with E and B and, and also asked E and B to follow up. There's a signature form that it not allows you to use on projects. Just to make sure that a final contact's been made with all the property owners and that they don't have any ongoing issues. I think there was one gentleman here at one of the meetings, so I know they've been having a discussion, that came up on our walkthrough, and they said they had planned to meet with him, I believe, this week and go over the proposal that he had to get that forward.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll hear from them on that very soon. And then I had one item, and again, if Jeff is here, Jeff, are you here from EMS? If not, I'm holding off on that one. It was a suggestion, looking at a slight difference for return to work protocol for COVID nineteen for EMS staff. And this was something that we shared to him that I think's recommended for healthcare workers versus kind of the rest of us, you know. So it was something I think he wanted us to do for EMS if we can. I reviewed it, I didn't have any issues with it, but again, I don't think he's here tonight, so maybe just hold off on that.
Are you looking for a motion on that?
Um, I think I'll hold off since Jeff's not here, though.
All right.
And the last thing I had is just a follow-up for all the council again that everyone that attended the economic development session, both those with Cheryl, seventeen people responded to the final survey. And just kind of to summarize, there were a couple left no questions and more detailed comments. Sixteen said yes. Yeah, and for to create a board, our coalition of officials, local government, parks, nonprofits, and businesses, similar to the previous seller committee, to lead an economic development ship and call work. And that was, they did not undecided. Pretty strong response there. And then on, on the question about hiring a professional consultant to assist with, facilitate that process, eleven said yes, six undecided. And then the rest are long answer, this is the volunteer question again. So I, those responses are.
Great. I just wanted to add that we have been talking to Cheryl about meeting with the town council and work session. She has some family health situations going on this week. So she's going to get back to us on that day. We had sort of thought maybe a work session before the first December meeting. If that works out for her, we'll definitely notify council and Karen for advertising. But just wanted to make sure you guys remember that she thought a session would just pass. So we'll definitely follow up with that. All right, great. So we'll move on to head reports. I don't think Jeff is on the line, so. Is anyone on the line for the park department?
Yeah, Ken too.
Hi, Ken.
Hey, I don't have anything for you all unless you have any, any questions for me.
All righty, any questions for Ken? All right.
I think our only, our only outstanding issue, we're waiting on TCS to get out here and do that floor and bay and road marking. We're pushing on them as hard as we can to get that, we want to get that done and processed and expensed off as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Is anyone on the line for the police department? I don't think he was going to be, right? Okay. Amber, are you on the line for the park department?
So many.
And Bob Porter, are you on for utilities? I don't see Bob's name up there, so. Okay, is anyone reporting from the plan commission? Or VZA?
Not seeing anyone from VZA, I will at least give a brief update. VZA asked Jim to be at their last meeting. There was concern over, I guess, lack of information on one of their hearings in October. And so it was put on the agenda for discussion and there is a process that allows for them to reconsider a hearing, basically. And their decision was made to. to reconsider a hearing, basically, and the decision was made to report with a reconsideration hearing, a hearing from back in October, and that'll be at the December meeting, and it was for, I believe the address is 311 St. Baker Street.
Okay. All right, thank you. Redevelopment question, anything to report, Rich?
No, nothing to report. We had sent out the copy of the survey from the online website development project that was sponsored by the PRC and Val Colver. Our next meeting is the 21st of December.
Okay. I don't, is anyone on the line for the tree commission? Okay, we'll move on to the clerks' report.
I just have a couple of claims over $2,000 for your approval. The first one is for Anson Corporation for $2,000, and that's for software support for the accounting software that I use. The second one, you actually are on the approved, that it was normal list on my first report, the huge fire equipment for $4,102.15, and that was fire fighting supplies, but you actually did approve that a couple of weeks ago. And then finally, E&amp;B paving, $6,000, and that's for the patches for the street department. Your, your given heads up on, but just to make it official.
Motion to approve the claims above $1,400?
So move.
Above $2,000.
Oh, yeah.
We have the number.
Sorry.
Second.
Proud of it, yeah. Okay, we have a motion from Bill Giffens, second by Mr. West. Roll call. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
I wanted to let you know that the additional preparations was, were, they were approved by the Department of Local Government Finance, so we are set there. I sent out a list of the 2021 holidays, and if you are all okay with that, if you could just make a motion to approve those dates, and then I will get that out.
Motion to approve the holidays.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
You'll have things to be, in July.
Yeah.
Thank you, in July.
After this year. It's like a fully held. I'll just take them all in January. And then finally, the December meeting, I left it as to be determined on the original schedule. Right now, it's scheduled on the 22nd of December, and I know just because it's around Christmas, there may or may not be some traveling issues, although this was also a year ago when it was pre-COVID. So I would, it's up to you if you want to leave it as scheduled on the 22nd or meet a week later, which would be the 28th of January.
You mean December.
Or, yeah. I just want to get that.
Yes. Council, is the 22nd okay for everyone?
Sure.
Don't know what else.
Just want to make the off, and now that I'm on, it's left to do, so.
What, the 22nd for what?
For council meeting in December, December 22nd is what it falls on.
Okay.
Second meeting. And Karen wanted to make sure there'd be enough of us here for that, not to reschedule for the next week.
Make it worth a while.
Yeah. I think it should be okay. It sounds like we'll have a quorum for sure.
And then I just wanted to remind you, I gave you all a proposal from Victor Tilly on the last series study, of your consideration, whenever you'd like to move on that.
Do you guys want to make a decision on that tonight, or you want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Why not next?
Okay. Everyone take a look at that for the next meeting, so we can make a decision on that.
The ordinance for the EMS to skip.
Yeah. No, that's okay. So I did put it on the agenda, just because I got it out on the weekend, but hopefully you did see Jeff had proposed some changes to the rates, which weren't, weren't major, but I did update the ordinance, but it will require a public hearing, I believe, because we're changing fees. And so if you're okay with it, I, and we probably don't want to do it December 22nd, so if it's okay, I'll just give advertising out for the first meeting in January, and then you can do the first reading of that meeting and we can get moving.
Okay.
It's just timing wise.
I just didn't know if you wanted to be in for some.
Yeah.
All right. Great, thank you, Karen. Attorney's report, Mr. Clevinger?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have four quick things. The first one, I'm going to wear my county attorney hat. Thanks for your, for the face mask ordinance and requirements, and also I appreciate the crossroads initiative. Now, back to my Culver hat, number two. I just will comment on the BZA meeting the other night that I was asked to attend, and I will say that Jonathan's was probably putting things in the best light for the petitioners as far as lack of information, how that sorts out down the road. I, I think the BZA was rather upset with the way the prior meeting was conducted and, and, Abipso, I sent an email out to all of you earlier this afternoon. I talked to both Kathy Russell and the other fellow, Mr. Suter, who's apparently been tasked with either modeling or tearing down, and understands that at this point it's looking more like demolition, indicated to me he's got some people lined up to come up and tear the siding off, so he can look at it to make a final decision, and is also thinking that maybe he'll just work with the town in, in tearing down the building and, and paying for the teardown and doing it such a way that he, he will be able to rebuild. So kind of encouraging, as you recall, he's got till December 11th, so we're, we're still not in any kind of actions. And then, fourth item, final item, 415 Lakeshore Sheriff's Sale has been rescheduled for January 26, 2021 at 1:00 PM. I think we've got all the kinks worked out, and that should be good to go. We should be seeing some, you should be seeing some notices in the, in the Culver Citizen in the days ahead. Just as a curiosity, I showed up today at what was originally scheduled for the sheriff's sale, just to see if anybody would attend that maybe didn't get notice of the cancellation. I guess I'm particularly interested to see if Van Hawk or a representative of 27 Group Inc. or of this foundation might attend. No one did. We didn't get any bankruptcy notices, we didn't get any inquiries on real estate taxes, so I'm anticipating that sheriff's sale will be, we'll put in our bid, we'll, we'll be prepared to pay the real estate taxes, and if somebody comes in and bids over, we'll get our money back and our taxes back, and, and property will be someone else's other than ours. So if you have any questions about either Abipso or Lakeshore, let me know, or I'd be happy to answer them now. That's, that's all I have. Yes?
I'm sorry, this is a question about the 415 Lakeshore Drive. We are actually, will the hearing take place?
The, the sheriff's sale for 415 takes place in the lobby of the Marshall County Jail.
And with the COVID things that are going on, anticipated that will still occur?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sorry, with the COVID activity and restrictions, that still anticipated that that will go on, take place?
Yes, because the, the county actually tried to shut the facility down, the jail facility to visitors, but exception was made for the sheriff's sale to be conducted. They didn't want it to be conducted outside, and the lobby's fairly good size, and as long as it doesn't get overcrowded and everybody's spaced and everybody's got a mask on, they proceed. So there were two sales today, three individuals there to bid just on one project, one property, the other property wasn't there, and the sheriff and the SRI was conducting it, and, and everybody was well-spaced, and, and I don't think, I guess they felt like that was sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, what time was it again on the 26th? Is it 1:00 PM you said?
Yes, 1:00 PM.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We obviously don't have citizen input in the room, is there any citizen input online tonight? You can unmute yourself and speak up. Okay, I don't see anyone unmuting or hearing anyone, so we will move on to council issues. Mr. Clevinger, do you have any council issues?
Going to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Steve.
You too.
Yes.
Phil Giffens, do you have any council issues?
Well, Bill beat me to it, so happy Thanksgiving.
Well, you too. Mr. West, do you have any council issues?
No, I do not.
And Sally, any council issues?
I will be here.
I just want to say thank you to all of our employees for getting us to this point in the year. I know on Thanksgiving, I'll be counting all of you and Karen and our wonderful attorney and our awesome, amazing town manager, as well as our staff and mine, what I'm thankful for, and I'm also thankful for this council team. I really appreciate all of you and how we got through the year so far, so happy Thanksgiving for me as well. And then I guess we can adjourn to claims.
So move.
Right. Last roll call for Karen. Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.